Roll call please.
Councilmember Bernwood?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Obezo Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tucker?
Here.
Mayor Oparano?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Mr. Dale, if you need it, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who serve us, one nation under God. And in this court, we will never change just as strong.
Thank you very much. All right, uh. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, Mr. Mayor, we would, we would ask that you add an item to your action calendar. That has to do with a support letter for a bill that's being proposed by a state senator. Yeah, uh, having to do with Senate Bill eleven oh five and, and they're seeking a letter of support. So, and we, uh, just got the request within the last day or so. And so we would ask that you take an action, have to add it to your action calendar. On the basis that there is a need for immediate action, example, today. Uh, and that meeting arose after your agenda was proposed.
Okay.
So you will require the court.
Appreciate it. All in terms of motion?
Oh.
That motion from Mr. Tucker, second from Ms. Bernwood. Uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Bernwood?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obezo Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Oparano?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
This will be added as item C eleven. Thank you very much. Um, did you turn any, any reports on closed session?
Yes, the city council members met in closed session and discussed one item, significant exposure to litigation. Direction was given to council, no additional report on that item. And, uh, also discussion of performance evaluation of the city manager and direction was given. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to public comments. At this time, members of the public may address city council on any matters not listed on the, on the posted agenda. Pursued through the Brown Act, uh, no action will be taken on any issue brought forth under public comment. If you wish to address city council concerning any items within the council, city council jurisdiction, please remain happy acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state the name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a timeline of three minutes. On each person's presentation, if a request of long presentation being submitted to the city clerk's in off, office. In writing forty eight hours before the meeting. Do we have anybody for public comments? One, once, twice? Thank you. I see no public comments. Any, anything by mail? Mail, nothing? Good, thank you. Um, appreciate that. Moving on to item. A presentations, we're gonna do proclamation presentation for autism, uh, autism acceptance month. And that's gonna be with Mr. James Gonzalez. I'll, I'll read the pro, proclamation and then, uh, we'll go from there and then you come up and speak and we'll do that whole good thing, right?
That spiel that I do, yeah.
There you go. Appreciate that. So proclamation reads City of Imperial proclamation autism acceptance month. Says whereas April is autism acceptance month, our ox, acceptance month. It is meant to highlight autistic individuals and their achievements while recognizing their continued struggle. For equality and full inclusion in society and whereas the goal is to educate the public. On support services and these, the stagnatize the perspectives of those living with, with autism and. Whereas autism is a developmental disability that affects how people think, communicate and experience the world around them. And there is no single cause of autism, but increased awareness and early diagnosis can lead. To a significantly improved outcomes and whereas this month, we also celebrate the work of advocates, professionals, family members. And all those who work to build a bright tomorrow alongside with those with autism and whereas the city of Imperial proudly supports. The annual observance of autism acceptance month. In the hope that it will lead to a better understanding and acceptance of individuals with autism. So now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Oparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council. Do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty four as autism acceptance month in the city of Imperial. Passed and adopted on this third day of April twenty twenty four at a regular council meeting, City of Imperial. So, thank you. Hope you got, when you're ready, come on, buddy.
Nope.
Nope. They don't.
Top line.
They're on order.
So I just have to speak in my normal voice loud. Um, first of all, uh, thank you very much for, um. Having us, we, we do have actual gifts to present to the council members. Uh, don't worry, we're, uh, we're not volunteering you this year. Although it is a five K run, so maybe that you can, I'm gonna give them to you to distribute accordingly.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So if you don't get the shirt that's supposed to be for you. Same thing with, with, uh.
Thank you.
Our medals that were given out for the five.
Appreciate it.
Say hi, guys.
Hello.
So, um, thank you very much. We greatly appreciate, um, annually coming out here for the, um, proclamation. Really warmed our heart that, that you guys come out and, and do this, especially, you know, now it's, it's right before our, our autism fair that you guys. You know graciously posed for us, which is a highlight of our year and, and we greatly appreciate everything that you do. Um, we, we also come with, with more gifts, uh, besides the ones that we're giving you, which in, in this year, we've received a grant. From the Department of Developmental Services, State of California, um, in, in partnership with San Diego Regional Center. Who have, uh, from San Diego Regional Center is here to also speak a bit, um. And San Diego State University, we have partnered up in order to, um. Build a custom mobile diagnosing trader, which we're gonna move throughout the county. In order to meet the individuals where they're at. Um, we know that it's very tough for, for parents. Um, and family members to even afford to get to San Diego Regional Center, which is in Central. I know it's a long way from Imperial, but you know, i- it's one of those things, whatever we can do to get closer to, to our families. Um, not only that, make even more awareness and more acceptance. Um. It, it's one of those things that there are some parents that still, you know, that, that have young children, four, five, six, seven. That, that don't even know that their children are autistic. So that's, that's a, a better way for us to get out there. Um, we're hoping that, uh, with San Diego State and with maybe some of the other colleges coming in. We can get individuals, uh, preliminary diagnosed and then referred to San Diego Regional Center. So that way they can get services as well as receive services from, uh, Imperial Unified School District or your district. Um, and, um, other services like IHSS, um, and medical services that they would want. So this is all to kind of prove that, um. Did I go to say, um, because I'm nervous, but I apologize for that. Um. And so all this comes with good news, but not everything's good right now. Um, the. Governor has proposed what's called a master plan, the new budget, um, and his new budget, he plans to cut funding. Uh, for individuals with intellectual disabilities, um, which is what the regional centers through the twenty one regional centers throughout the state. Um, how it works is through the Lauterman Act, um, the state of California matches, um. The, the, what the federal government gives, um, by double. So what, what the federal government gives in this particular case is forty percent, um, and the, and the state of California gives sixty percent. And so, um, that's still gonna be the case, but the example I like to give is if there's. Nine hundred thousand that's normally given, sixty percent of that is by the state, forty percent of that is by the federal government. It's now gonna be six hundred thousand. And so in that example, it's still gonna be a sixty forty split. It, it just means that it's gonna lead to less services for individuals with intellectual disabilities, including those with autism like my son. Um, that's something that I, I went to the state of, of California. The, the state, uh, capital, that's what I meant to say, um, that went with the Assembly, uh, Budget Subcommittee. Um, to the, to let them know as a parent, my concerns for, uh, the possible changes to this budget. Um, and how it could affect my son and how it could affect thousands in the, in the state of California. And, and we really need your help and your support in order to make sure that, that, that doesn't get passed because, um. If, if anybody's the most vulnerable in our community, it's individuals with intellectual disabilities. Um, and they're, they're the most dependent on all of us. And so we, we need that, um, support from, from our leaders. Um, in order to make sure that that does get passed. Um. Down something, sorry. Um. So that's, that's one of the things, um, that we got going on. Of course. Please invited to come to our autism fair. That's a great news. You know, that's this Saturday, so I expect, um, from this crowd, I expect a hundred percent participation. Um, I know that that's not gonna be possible, but you know, we'd like to, to get, get you guys out here. Yes, we're having a dump tank. Nobody in this room has been voluntold. We tried getting Tony, he said he would, he would. He would empty out the tank and just one, and, and just by putting his head in, so, um.
His dad wants to do it.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I can tell by the, by the. I can train on it, I'm sorry.
We do have a happy, you know, chief that, two chiefs that are really happy and might, you know.
Might, might be, might be volunteering.
Yeah.
We can convince them to jump in, they can take, they could take one of, one of our spots from one of our board members. Um, we, we, this year, we, we tried going with the theme of educators. Uh, we wanted to call them our supers. Um, unfortunately, we only had like. Three superintendents, um, throughout the country that, that stepped up, um, some assistant superintendents, um. We, we tried getting the, the, the unified superintendents to come out here. Um, we didn't, we didn't get, we didn't, uh, get anybody. But we've got some, some good educators that are willing to be, um, dumped and so, um, you guys were saved this year. What more? Um. You said that there's not really much more we, we, we have going on. It's just, that's our biggest concern right now is the intended budget cuts. Um, but it's, it's, um, we know that with your helping with your support, um, we can make sure that that does get passed.
Absolutely. Thank you. You got somebody else from San Igor?
Well, I have your turn. In other words, your turn, boy.
James.
And then we can come take pictures.
Good evening, mayor, council members and city council officials. Quan Gonzalez, Assistant Director with San Diego Regional Center. I just wanna say that we are very fortunate to have parents like, uh, James and the parents that are here and a lot of advocates that are here locally. We are very, very fortunate to have them because, um, the advocacy work that they do, um, really has huge impact. Um, James has me very, very busy all the time. I mean, he, he, he's got me on my phones all the time. Because, um, one of the times he shared with me and he says autism isn't, doesn't, doesn't stop. So, um. When I left I B R O P, um, I was, it was grant funded, my previous job, it was grant funded a hundred percent. I was managing like six, well, ten million dollar grants. And I came to Regional Center and I said, thank you Lord, no more grants. Well, that's not the case. Um, I, uh, was managing a three year, uh, one million dollar grant. Um, that ended last year and I re applied for the grant and we got another million dollars. For that. And then like James talked about this, the grant that I'm also involved in. So. We're bringing in dollars to support individuals with developmental disabilities and expand the services that we're providing to them. So. Um, it's a lot of work, but it, it pays off because we really see the benefits. One of those grants that I'm managing is, um, to, we're doing some research. On the behaviors, um, behaviors right now, the research is with the school districts. Um, we're trying to figure out what types of interventions are work and are effective. So, um, I try to keep myself as short as possible, but I wanna thank you for this proclamation. Thank the city and if we can ever be of service, uh, for anything, please send us all our offices. I think we, last time I came in, I took you guys over at the, uh, University of Phoenix. So, if you ever need anything, let us know.
My shit. Thank you.
He gets voluntold a lot.
Does he? Anyone else? Okay. There you go.
That's your proclamation and thank you very much.
I think we'd all. Yeah, this is, uh.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
One, two, three, and I'm taking out. One, two, three. Give me one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Very much. There you go. Oh, there you go. Thank you very much. So moving on. Um, we're gonna move proclamation presentation for National Library. Yeah. So, it says City of Imperial proclamation, National Library Week. Uh, National Library Week was first, uh, sponsored in nineteen fifty eight. And the week long event was developed with the intent to motivate people to read as well as to support and show appreciation to their libraries and. This year, National Library Week is celebrated from April seventh to April thirteenth with the theme, Ready, Set, Library. Which emphasizes the excitement and readiness to explore the world of knowledge and resources that libraries offer. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever changing needs of their communities by developing and expanding collections. Uh, programs and services that are diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet access. Literacy skills and support for job seekers, uh, small businesses and entrepreneurs. And whereas City of Imperial. Uh, city council commends the passion and dedication of our library professionals that contribute to the cultural enrichment. Educational achievement and social cohesion of our city. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Oparano, on behalf of the city, the Imperial City Council do hereby proclaim April seventh through April thirteenth. Twenty twenty four is National Library Week in the City of Imperial, passed and adopted on this third day of April twenty twenty four. At a regular meeting of the Imperial City Council. So, thank you very much and this will be, uh, supposed to be for holler.
This short, um, Mr. Mayor. That's a good thing for me. It's been a long time, I think, addressing the pro tem and members of the council. Um, we are just very thankful for the recognition, uh, for the library. Uh, we're thankful for serving, uh, being able to serve the City of Imperial through library services. Uh, there's, as you know, there's, it's not just books anymore. It's information, it's services, programs, it's.
Garden.
I was just talking about, uh, the library things, the city manager. Uh, so we're just very warm and grateful. So tonight, um, we have with us our literacy coordinator who has been with the library for almost twenty years. I would say fifteen. And then we also have our, our literacy coordinator who you see running everywhere, getting things done. And then our library as well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And I know that every time, when I step into the library, there's always something new. Uh, whether it's a new program, new stuff happening, I, I, I like, I enjoy seeing that, so.
We're grounded.
I think the rest of us can say the same. So anybody, anything?
My kids always ask me if, on the weekends, if they can go to the library. I explain to them that it's closed. But they absolutely love the library. So you all are doing a great job.
And for those watching, the, the, the garden, garden is really, really nice. Growing a lot of great stuff and that, you know, the care with staff. Library staff and all other city support, it, it, it's turned out great, you know? The one thing that we kept hearing that day was, how do we make it bigger? Start growing that way. Which way did we go? But no, thank you. Let me come down. How you doing?
No, hi. One, two.
Thank you. You guys appreciate it now.
I know, it's a girl.
All right. So thank you very much for, Mr. Gonzalez for being here today. Appreciate that. Our library staff, thank you guys very much for the hard work. And everybody that's in attendance for these proclamations. We know that for the City of Apurros, you know, the support that we give everybody, uh, very much appreciated. So thank you guys very much for everything. Uh, moving on to A three. We got presentation by, uh, Chief David Lentz from Pro County Fire Chief, Community Risk Analysis and Standards Cover Development Update.
Um, good evening. Thank you, uh, mayor. I just, uh, gonna use about five minutes of your time tonight. To give you a brief, uh, intro to, uh, something I mentioned a couple of months ago. That we were gonna begin working on developing, uh, community risk analysis, the standard to cover. Um. What are your question is what, what is a community risk analysis standard to cover? I, I break, I try to break things down so I can understand it. Basically, it's what we have to deal with and how we deal with. That's the two components, CRA, but and the SOC part is how we deal with it. It is an all hazard view of our community, the City of Imperial. And it is originates as a as a portion of the accreditation model that is overseen by the Center for Public Safety Excellence. The basis of accreditation and CPSE is quality improvement, continuous quality improvement, which is why on this next slide, when I talk about steps of the process, the process piece is underlying, the process part is underlying. Because it's not a project, this is a process that should continue indefinitely. And you get down to the fourth step, you can jump back up to the first one and then you continue on. So the steps of the process, what what we are initiating as the fire department is a complete risk analysis, as I mentioned, fire and non-fire risks. We're gonna document these findings. We're gonna create goals and objectives. And we're gonna we're gonna assign goals and objectives to our emergency response program. So how do we respond to hazardous materials, technical rescue, emergency medical, fire calls? And then we're gonna develop our standards of cover piece with benchmarks. And what are benchmarks? Benchmarks are basically goals, response time goals. And those will be based on our analysis of risks and the goals and objectives that we establish. And then finally, in the fourth bullet, we will then assess our our performance continuously. And then, as I stated before, we jump back up to the first bullet and we we start it all over again. Stay on the hamster wheel. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, we'll be documenting a a number of these things. So there will be a document in product. This is the basic sections that the product or that the document will be divided into. The documentation of area characteristics. That's the that's the portion that we're focusing on now. We're starting to dabble in the section B a little bit with our our risk analysis. There's a number of methodologies out there on how we analyze risks and determine what level of risk we have in in the city. So we're working through that piece. Section C would be our current deployment and current performance. And then section D, so from those first three steps, we're gonna we're gonna identify gaps in our response. So section D is how we deal with those gaps and how do we improve on narrowing those gaps. So where are we in the process? Right now, we are in that section AP that I showed you in the previous slide. We're documenting city limits, easy, easy. We get a map of the city. But we're also trying to not predict, but to anticipate future growth, right, and future demand of services. We've established a city, basically the four planning zones for us to assess. We're using Worthington Road and Highway eighty-six as our body line of the city. So there's basically four quadrants in the city. We're researching and documenting demographics, infrastructure. Again, we're starting to get into the the risks and looking at our our capabilities in providing service. And we're gonna look at those, not just the whole city, but we're also gonna break it down into zones. Now, a city this size, you're not gonna see a lot of differences in the zones, but we're we're dividing it in these zones, especially for response time measures, to see how much geography is playing a role, especially Highway eighty-six. And the road tracks, how much of a role does it play in travel time and how long it takes a unit to travel to the incident? And then we're also researching and documenting the history of the city in the fire department, which is always an interesting exercise because our the Dai Chief taking care of that exactly, speaking with retirees who were here at the time it was Imperial Fire Department to to get some information, document that information. So that's where we are at this point. I when I mentioned this a couple of months ago, I told you it would take about a year. We we have some personnel challenges. We have vacancy in deputy chief. We have another deputy chief out long term. I was talking to the police chief. I said, you know, when you don't have a bench and two of your starters go down, you just do the best you can. My goal is still by the end of the year, have this this document done and a plan, work plan based off of it to to implement. But I just wanna give you a heads up that that, you know, two of the starters are gone and we're trying to to get the bench rebuilt, so. Any questions on that?
No, I'm good. I do have one, I have one, but it will cover that.
All right. That's all I have. Appreciate it, James. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that.
All right, moving on to item B, consent item agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request any items, I consider separately that I will take it up as determined by the mayor. With that.
Make a motion to approve.
Take that motion by Ms. Mendoza.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo?
Yes. All right.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to the action items. C one, authorize removal of existing red curb on south side of East Barioni Boulevard. And that'll be by Mr. Don Mora, Community Development.
Sir Mayor and council members, that according to your request, for the removal of red curb along Barioni Boulevard that was dedicated to a bus station. We received feedback from the surrounding businesses and they are all in favor of the removal. The traffic commission recommends that the city council for the removal of the red curb and its staff recommends that the road for the move. And I'll stand for any questions that may have.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Take that motion by Ms. Burnward.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Tucker, please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on, item C two, authorize application submitted to obtain funding for Aiden Boulevard sidewalk installation phase one by Mr. Mora, Community Development Director.
Mayor and council members, item four is for a for approval of the resolution to obtain funding through the CMEC program. This is for the construction of sidewalks along Aiden Boulevard between Rogers Trail and SR eighty-six. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Didn't we get this from funded already? This was up. Yes, there about.
It was just for the rehab. Referring to SR eighty-six. And this one is to complete the sidewalks in north of Aiden.
Oh, we had the south side.
And we have the south side and the north side.
But last time was the south side.
The south, correct.
Okay. Any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Vote motion by Mr. Tucker. Second by Ms. Burnward. Please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C three, authorize application submitted for funding for Aiden Boulevard sidewalk installation phase two. Mr. Mora?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a resolution to obtain funding through the CMEC program for the construction of sidewalks between Little Road and SR eighty-six along Aiden Boulevard. And this will be for the south side of Aiden Boulevard. Staff recommends that the road, and I'll stand for any questions second.
Questions?
Make a make a motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Second by Ms. Obeso Martinez, please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Question.
Do you have to do roll call vote every time?
Right now, yeah, right now, I saw that. The crowd needs to know how you vote. So I guess you could all say yay and if all five of you, it's unanimous. So the crowd can identify who you are, but we do the roll call because the crowd has to know. Sorry. And all yeh. If you agree, then the crowd will be giving more.
Can we go like this?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to item C four, authorize application submitted to obtain funding for Aiden Boulevard sidewalk installation phase three. Mr. Mora?
Mr. Mayor and council members, this next item for is for the approval of resolution to obtain funding through the CMEC program for the construction of sidewalks between SR eighty-six and the railroad.
What side of the street? I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Mendoza. Second and third by Tucker, Ms. Burnward, please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C five, authorize applications submitted to obtain funding EV charging station. Purchase and installation phase one by Ms. Mora.
Mayor and council members, the next item is for approval of the resolution to obtain funding through the carbon reduction program for an EV charging station in the EV purchase. Staff recommends approval of resolution, code three thirteen, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Where's it gonna be at?
The proposed location would be at the transit park. The north side of the transit park, there is the parking area and we'll have the ability to install that in the transit station.
There's not really anywhere to walk to.
I'll make that motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, second by Ms. Mendoza.
Councilmember Burner? Oh, did you guys want? Is there any other place where we can do it? Or is that where we propose or propose it for funding?
It it's proposed funding. We can always make adjustments. The there's no other location. We looked at our city facilities. We have no one. We have nowhere to order. We're making some plans to back on parking, but still, yeah.
Right now, there that parking lot is being used by other stuff, parking their trucks. Last time there were man lifts in there, all kinds of other stuff being parked there, so.
We have nothing like downtown that we know of.
We have it in downtown, yeah. At this facility, it could be another location.
Just saying, with the walking distance, it would be specific to the park. Usually, like if you look EV charged, like they're like walkable to somewhere. Or they're giving a car, a restaurant, things like that. Our transit center, I've always have like the gripe of it. It's not in a very walkable place at all.
And we can.
But that's just, I mean, that's just. But yes, I will vote yes.
All right, so please vote. Or did we already do that? Okay.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo? Motion passes five zero.
And these are all the the plans that you submitted to ICTC, right, the nine?
Correct.
All right. I'm glad to see that, you know. Getting something there. Nobody else went for it. Might as well. Thank you. Moving on to C six, authorize application submitted to obtain funding EV charging station, purchase and installation of a phase two.
Mr. Mayor and council members, decided for you is for approval of the resolution to obtain funding through the carbon reduction program for an EV charging station in EV purchase phase two. Staff recommends approval, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Same location?
Same location. Not same location. You can always make adjustments.
And then before we have to pass phase three, the same location.
Yep, correct.
Did I make a wrong one or am I right?
Three, three, if you saw one, two, three. Space means three V's.
All right, take a motion by Mr. Tucker. Second by Ms. Mendoza, please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo? Motion passes five zero.
All right, item C seven, authorize application submitted to obtain funding for EV charging station, purchase and installation of phase.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is for phase three for EV charging station program. Staff recommends approval. What's your thoughts on any questions that you think?
I'm sure excited that you and Mr. Tucker voted yes at all.
You know why I'm excited? That, you know what? You're right. You're right. Thanks. And one of the reasons is is because we some we're we were one of the only cities that submitted for funding for this stuff. And and so being other cities, nobody, nobody did anything. But yet we're we're trying. Yes, I'm still gonna drive my diesel. I'm still gonna go park there. So is Mr. Tucker.
Don't count it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion is second, please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
To reduce, we have gases, right?
Yes, but the EVs will chew in surface.
You know what? Uh, yes. You gotta see me flash the flash the black smoke. Moving on to item C eight, authorize application submitted to obtain funding for P Street Rehabilitation Phase One. We guess, Mr. Mora?
Mr. Mayor and council members, decided for you is for the approval of resolution to obtain funding through the SDPG program for the road we have on P Street from Aiden to Rosso Niko. Staff recommends approval, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
So I think this is the one I've been talking about, right? It's been on the list to we have P Street.
And is it just asphalt or what do you mean by rehabilitation?
Yes, grinding in order.
And again, that's gonna be the same for all three.
This is just a.
This, yeah.
Yeah, for C eight, C nine, C ten, it's all grinding in over like, okay.
Are we have that speed limit signs there?
It's not part of the package.
So here's. I always skip. The speed limit is twenty-five all through there.
You mean the speed hit, sorry, speed?
Speed limit.
They've been sized out right at once?
No.
Speed limit, just a speed limit sign.
Why you been ran over on that street, back going twenty-five?
Yeah, because I have a speed tracker in my work truck. So now it's twenty-five.
And then you hit that little bump and it goes to.
No, it's all twenty, all twenty-five.
Really? Even on the county side?
It's all twenty-five. No, like, like on GPS.
Uh, GPS, I don't trust the GPS.
What's the, what's the, don't you know that?
Yeah, but I I've seen I've seen actual conflict. That one is a posted sign and GPS says something.
Do we know the speed limit past like now, past that, what is it, a? In the county side?
Oh, county side? Forty-five.
Forty-five, right?
Okay, I all will work.
All right, so you're forty-five, forty-five. You have fifty-five, fifty-five. I'm glad. It's gonna be an option here.
We'll we'll work with the other jurisdictions and determine it and then talk to Ogo, come back. He goes, it says it's twenty-five. We'll start that out because I went forty-five and got in trouble at work. We're going four to five miles an hour in a twenty-five. So that's why I'm asking. We'll talk. See, see nobody hurts.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Take a motion by Mr. Tucker. Second by Ms. Mendoza, please vote.
Councilmember Burner? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obeso Martinez? Mayor Potem Tucker? Mayor Amparo? Motion passes five zero.
Awesome. Moving on to C nine, authorize application submitted to obtain funding for P Street Rehab, Rehabilitation Phase Two.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the next item is approval of resolution to obtain funding for the SDPG program for the road we have of P Street from First Street to Barioni Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of resolution, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
That one needs a course in the one above it. They all need.
All right, Ms. Mendoza Martin makes a motion. Second by Ms. Burnward, please vote. Second by Ms. Bernhard, please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Abesal Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Accra?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to item C ten, authorized applications submitted to obtain funding for P Street rehabilitation phase three.
Last item, approval resolution to obtain funding through the SDBG program for rehab. Uh, staff recommends approval, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
I'll make a motion to.
Yeah, motion by Ms. Mendoza, second by Ms. Bernhard, please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Abesal Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Accra?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright.
And that ends the phone show.
Not gonna give anybody else a chance? Instead of pass them on, I mean, it was tough for everybody to take one, yeah.
It's almost like a planning commission.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on to item C eleven, and that'll be Ms. Maria.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor and council, we, we received a request, I believe, yesterday. Um, from, uh, state senator Steve Padilla's office, uh, for a letter of support. Uh, he's proposing Senate Bill eleven point five, and that bill, uh, would, uh, in the event of a state or local emergency. Uh, allow agricultural workers to use approved sickly, uh, to avoid, uh, the effects of the emergency and the nature of smoke heat or flooding. And so, uh, that's bill is being proposed, he's asking this council to submit a letter of support, um, by the seat. That's the reason we placed it on your agenda.
Any comments, questions, concerns? I will entertain the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tucker?
I'll second it.
For a letter of support.
Second by Ms. Mendoza, please vote.
Councilmember Bernhard?
No.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Abesal Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Accra?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. One.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to, uh, reports, department reports, how about we start with Mr. Mora?
Really?
You had all items.
All of them.
Okay, thank you.
Dale. Hello, honorable mayor and councilman. I'm David Dale. I started on Monday, and so, getting my feet wet and all that. Must say, very impressed on the status of the city and what you've been able to do in the past five to ten years. Waste water treatment, I have water treatment plant, equipment, all in super good condition. So we'll be working on trying to maybe tweak a little things here and there, but you've done a great job. Impressed, so, I've got a great pot, uh, clay pot to work with, so you've, you've set it up, so thank you for that. Uh, I did wanna let you know also that, um, yesterday, we received notice that, uh, one of the contractors who's working on a project, a roadway project near the intersection of B Street and Marione, or otherwise known as the brewery in Worthington. Uh, he contacted city staff and said that he would pave, grind and overlay the intersection at no cost to the city, as long as the city will provide the traffic control. And so, got with staff and prepared a detour plan, and actually knew because the county had an approach permit already in that area, so contacted the county. And they were in an agreement to go ahead and do that work, uh, as long as the, the traffic control plan was implemented, so. I wanna make sure you are aware that that intersection will be closed tomorrow, I apologize for the lack of, of notice, I had to make a snap call on that, so you can blame that a hundred percent on me. Um, but I felt like the value to the citizens would be more than the inconvenience of the closure and a detour for one day, so. Um, if you get any calls, you can have them send directly to me, so, no problem, but hopefully that'll be done tomorrow, one day and, and one is done.
Do we know the hours of the closure?
Six AM to four PM, I believe.
Did we notify the school, see if they were able to notify parents?
Although the good thing is.
Oh. See what happens when you don't have kids?
But that should have been a part of this process, we knew the school was closed, so it wouldn't have that much of an impact on it, there'll be a detour and, and so they'll be okay.
That, no cost, I think it's all a great win, win-win all around, thank you.
That is in the county, it is a county intersection mostly.
We do have a little section.
It, it definitely affects the residents here, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mora?
Like James, uh, and Autism, uh, mentioned earlier, we have our autism fair Saturday from noon to five. Uh, the five day, for those of you who want to run, walk, ride the bike, uh, crawl, um. Uh, that would be, they'll, they'll be taking registrations at nine AM on site, uh, the day of. If you can register online, uh, through their, or through their link, their link is on our, uh, Instagram page, if you wanna go in there and check that out. Um, but, uh, that, that's always the fun event, that's for a very good cause, it's to raise awareness, not only to raise awareness, but to, it's, it's for everybody, it's for the entire public. I know we call it the autism, uh, uh, fair, but it's for everybody, uh, to come and enjoy, we're gonna have petting zoo's, jumpers, everything for, for anybody to come and enjoy and, and spend the day at the park. Uh, we also have our, uh, summer guide releasing here soon, probably by, uh, end of, uh, April, early May, for the summer program for currently training bike carts. We have the ability now to, uh, do all the training and certification in-house, so we're also attracting, uh, uh, a revenue source, uh, we got Collex, one Raleigh and a few other cities that are coming to certify here. Um, and then, uh, the last thing, Park After Dark, day eighteen, from six to ten, which would be the, uh, end all of our season. So we hope to go out, uh, with the bang and bring out some, uh, really good entertainment and some different pictures for the public to enjoy.
When is the certification program, sorry?
Certification program has, it started Monday, we did put it out, uh, there are actually two sessions, uh, right now, they're, and today they ended session one, uh, the first group tested, uh, to pass. And then, uh, session two starts from Thursday through Saturday, so we did have a, a good turnout of people, like I said. Uh, for some reason, Collex, the overall, they're not able to certify or they're not authorized to, but Imperial is, so, uh, between Imperial and Alcentro, getting a lot of traffic.
And it's being done at our.
Correct.
Of the people that participated, how many of them do you think will actually come to work in Imperial?
So, what we're doing is, uh, so a lot of them, like I mentioned, are coming because they can't certify in their city, so they probably already have, uh, job opportunities waiting for them. But we probably have a, at least half a dozen or more that are gonna be, uh, coming to actually work for us, some are part of the, uh, second, uh, interview process. So we allow the candidates, uh, the interview, to do a second interview, if they plus, pass the prerequisites, they would be eligible for hire.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, as this morning, our service crew, we'll start the installation of the south system on April twenty ninth, so.
Only one night, we have to go.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, glad to hear that, appreciate it, uh, chief?
Mayor, council, um, April twelfth through the nineteenth is the public safety just by appreciation, um, although we don't have our own, we do have a project with the insurance department. So at some point, we'd be seeking approximation, hopefully, to extend our appreciation as a organization. And as a city to the efforts the insurance department gives to both count, uh, both buyer and police. And then, to clarify the issue about speeding, um, it is forty five unless otherwise posted in divided highways in rural areas, one bordered by residences, so, I think you have an opportunity.
It's recorded. Thank you, chief. Chief?
Uh, the, um, speaking of, of Chief Flores leaving, uh, so I think now we need to revise the job description for that position. Uh, so, a- as you know, it takes a little bit of time, it's supposed to be HR and the board has to approve it, uh, but we hope to get that approved in the next couple of weeks and start improvement for that position.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, we didn't, uh, not really much of an update, but, uh, just wanted you to know that our budget process is in progress and a couple of deadlines are coming up, so hopefully by then, uh, we're starting to view. The big picture and we start checking that.
Ready to get hard copies?
Yeah.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, so since our last meeting, we have had five new hires.
Nice.
Uh, so, going to start with David Dale, Public Services, uh, Director for Public Services. Our next is Anthony Roscoe, General Maintenance Worker One, also with Public Services. Then we have Joshua Perez, General Maintenance Worker One, also Public Services. We have Jorge Ramirez, uh, Public Services, uh, General Maintenance Worker One as well. And then, we have Daniel Warner Schleier, uh, Police Officer for our department, uh, so, as you see them, um, say hello, hi, our, our little city is growing.
Well, well, welcome, Mr. Dale. Thank you, appreciate it, and wanted to wait till we got to this point to say thank you and welcome to the city.
Um, yeah, Mayor and council, I do have just one minor update, we had submitted and uploaded all of our information to our people portal for our Hillary disaster reimbursement, that's kind of going through, we got our email the other day. That they're about to release our payments once we get all of our paperwork in, so I know it might still take a little bit of time, but we got that one in the queue for it to be coming down, and then we've been working with our partners at Calloway S and T to do all the recovery for COVID. So we've been getting the most final numbers, so it's gonna take a while, but it's trickling in and we'll be getting those payments back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Maria? Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, so you see the new hires, uh, and, uh, I'm happy that, that they're here. Uh, I, I, I mentioned, I think, to, uh, Chief Rill when he showed up on Tuesday, that I was happy to see that he showed up on the second day, but. I've been, I'm meeting with both him and, uh, Mr. Dale and, uh, so they, they're making their way through what we'll call the onboarding process, but there's a lot going on in their respective departments and, uh. Uh, I, I, I respect the experience they bring to their positions and so forward to working.
Thank you. Side, send a turn. Send Eric Clark. Then we'll start on this side, this, this Martinez.
So, attended the opening of the farm. There's some green stuff, it's like a black stuff, and so it's amazing to see all the vegetables and the stuff that's grown here, um, the blues brews and barbecues, it was windy, but it was still well attended and lots of food sold out, I heard. Uh, so, it was great to see everybody still out there, and then a couple of things, um, from the, the committee that I sit on, the Pearl Valley Regional, um, Chamber of Commerce is looking for a Board of Director application. They're looking for a two-year term from the city of Imperial, and applications are available on our website, and then they have the Margarita Challenge coming up on May second. So tickets are thirty dollars, I think you can form a team, do some shoes, team drinking, you guys.
Oh, I was like, we got this one. Oh.
You can also drink in the team, I guess. It's gonna be held at the IV Food Bank here, so that's here in Imperial, so, that as well.
Thank you. One more?
Oh, I'm happy to report. You go on healthcare board?
Yeah, yeah, I do. That's how it's trending, tell us.
Okay, so we have, so far, I would say for the Pearl Valley Healthcare District, we have hired a demographer, um, and the first public hearing, uh, will be in, there'll be four public hearings to draw up the district maps. The first ones will be in April, and then the second one should be around June, um, so that one will definitely, it's AB nine one eight timeline. Um, the IV HD does officially own the Faucon Hall study, so hopefully that can get, um, updated with the information from both hospitals to, um, just figure out how to merge them all together. So, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts, so, um, but I will say it's headed in the right direction and, for the most part, all parties have been collected. So are you available online, if people wanna go back and watch? Yeah, there are, there are IV dash HD dot org, you can find all of the general videos, everything, so, yeah, thank you.
Awesome, sounds fun. Ms. Mendoza?
Yeah, um, I had the honor of being a judge at our Blues Brews and Barbecue, and thank you to the staff, it was very professionally done and very, uh. I, I did, I've never been a judge like that before, and just the secrecy and the double, the double this and double that, it was, it was quite entertaining. Um, I also attended the, um, Policy Committee meeting in, uh, Burbank for the Transportation, Communication and Public Works, uh, group. And, uh, looked at a couple bills that were coming down the pipe and some interesting conversations that occurred that day, uh, other than that, I just say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker?
Well, then you may get to the Blues and Cruze, but, but now Felipe enjoyed the. And I'm back.
You were here in spirit?
Yes.
Well, I'm glad you're here in spirit, glad you made it back. So, yeah, so, I did get also a cha- a chance to attend the try-tip Blues, um, Blues Brews and Barbecue, that was very good, I, I mean, wind happens, it is what it is, but, you know, and in, and in Imperial fashion and manner, we just keep moving forward. Didn't let it stop us, a lot of food was sold, a lot of people still running around, having a good time, music was great, um, but, I, I do gotta say, the music lineup in the last events, gotta admit, it, it's been different, it's been nice. Um, great music, so, uh, but once again, thank you to staff, great event, um, the garden, you know, it was well, well attended, there was a lot of people there. Um, and like I said earlier, it couldn't have been done without, you know, library staff or public works or park folks, and everybody that's involved, it, it, you can tell, um, how much time was put into it. And, you know, some of the stories where you hear people saying, um, I didn't have this, so I just went to the library and got it, went back and finished cooking. It was nice, nice, nice to hear, um, little things like that, so, thank you very much for all the hard work. Uh, Cal Cities, we attended Cal Cities last week, uh, at, uh, Pearl County Office of Education, very nice room, nice state of the art, great. Um, then it's good, a couple of things happening, but, uh, we got a big update on Office of Ed and what they're doing, so that was good. Um, last but not least, uh, before that meeting, there was a LAFCO meeting, and I was elected onto the LAFCO board, so I will be now on LAFCO board. See how that goes, so, like Katie, wish us luck. Both our boards are a little tough on that one, so, um, with that, I de- definitely plan attending the Saturday at the, uh, Autism Fair, so look forward to that. With that, make sure you guys, uh, have a good weekend, enjoy, thank you guys very much for all the hard work, and with that, I adjourned the meeting and, you know.